We set to go? Excellent. Ah, well. Ah, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Ah, well. You know, I hate computers. The date is July 6th. This is a regularly scheduled meeting, the Wareham School Committee. As is our practice, this is being televised on WCTV, Community Television. Also, an audio recording of this meeting is being made by our Recording Secretary, Ms. Michelle Ruiz. So, I believe the first order of business? You can attend to that. Thanks. Ah, yes. I think the first order of business is going to be public participation. There is anyone out there that would like to speak to the committee and the public? Now's the time. I see Mr. Fitzgerald coming forward. Michelle, would you pick up? Oh, thanks. Good talk. Thank you.
Evening, everybody. My name is Brian Fitzgerald. I'm a fifth grade English and Social Studies teacher, who's on summer vacation, and president of the Wareham Education Association. I just wanted to briefly speak because I saw on the agenda was a proposal to raise substitute pay rates, and I wanted to speak in favor of that. I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but substitutes are paid lower in Wareham than any of the surrounding communities. And the effect is, as I'm sure you will hear, we don't always succeed in keeping and getting substitutes we need, which means that paraprofessionals are pulled out of their classrooms to substitute; special education teachers are pulled out of their classrooms to substitute; regular education teachers are forced to divide their classes or teach a class and a half. That last one's very isolated, in fairness. It's, as an educator, it's concerning to come in in the morning and to have the special education teacher with whom you work saying, "I won't be in class to support your students today because I am in for another person." You know, we need time to work on curriculum. We need time for professional development. Unfortunately, sometimes that means it happens during the day when the students are there. And, yes, people do get sick. But I'm hopeful the committee, and I don't even know what numbers are on the table, I'm hopeful the committee will consider a increase in substitute pay so that we can avoid these issues, we can be fully staffed, and maybe even pay them minimum wage, which we do not at present do. So, I just saw that on the agenda and wanted to speak to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to address the committee and the public? Seeing no stampede. Let's move on to good news.
I would like to invite the PTA to come forward and share some of the wonderful accomplishments they have achieved during the school year. This is the middle, high school PTA, and in August or September, we will have the elementary.
Hi.
Yes, if you'd be so kind as to identify yourselves.
I'm Tusha Baudjali.
And Jamie Wickston.
And this is Heather Hogan. And I'm just gonna go give you a quick recap of our fundraising efforts this year. We had a very successful year. We combined high school and middle school. We raised a total of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We had a fall fundraiser, Meadow Farms Comedy Night. We had a Halloween dance for our fifth and sixth graders, a paint night. We sold some Viking merchandise, T-shirts, and rally rags, box tops, Bay State textiles. We had a seventh grade dance this year, which was new. Dinner nights, St. Patrick's Day carnations. We did movie morning, game tournament, and a few others. And with, because we were so successful, we were able to supply a bunch of enrichment grants, and we gave out a total of seventeen thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars in grants. And then, for next year?
Because last year was so successful, we're gonna continue with the same fundraising efforts, the same type of fundraisers. These fundraisers offer a nice opportunity for children to get together socially with dances. It also allows our parents to come together as a community when we have comedy nights at Salerno's. So, we just feel that because these are so successful, we'll continue with the same fundraising efforts and continue with Minecraft Gaming Night that we had here for our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. It was a very successful night, and we're gonna add a few more because the children were so excited about it, and it brought in a nice amount of money and allows us to give money when teachers are looking for grants to provide enrichment for our school and for our kids.
Well, normally, we don't comment on public participation and good news and all that, but I would just like to commend you on your efforts. If, it's important that groups like yours exist for not only the financial benefit, but for the morale and the excitement that you bring to the school with your group and through the parents that you work with, and it's a terrific thing that you do. Absolutely terrific thing that you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sir.
I also wanted to extend my congratulations for a very busy and successful year. I could almost say indispensable what you do. But I also wanted to ask you, you're a set of really educated and committed set of eyes and ears. Do you feel you have the access to the people that you need to have when you hear things, good or bad, so that it gets to the people that can fix or should know they're doing a great job or whatever? And now is an opportunity. If you wanted to tell us something that you think we need to know, we'd be happy to hear it, or at least I would.
To answer the first question, yes. I think that the PTA has a wonderful rapport with our administration and our superintendent. Anytime we need to reach out to them or ask for their support, Scott Palladino is always there to help us and support us while we're supporting the school. So, I think we do, anything that we're looking for from our administration or teachers, they are there for us, and it helps us and allows us to be there for them. So, to answer that first part, yes, we do.
Great. Thank you.
I can't think of anything off of the top of my head right now, but-
Okay.
-for the second part of your question. But in the past, anytime we've reached out to them, they've been there for us, and the PTA tries very hard to meet the needs in return.
We have a website and a Facebook page, too, so any information we get or any articles, we try to share that out with everyone.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes of June 22nd meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additions, corrections, omissions, et cetera? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Four zero one. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Shaheen. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, good evening. Thank you. So, I'm here to talk about the community eligibility provision and the food service meal pricing for this coming year. So, to continue with the good news, I've got confirmation that the community eligibility provision program will continue and include all schools for all grades. So, that means that free lunch and free breakfast will be, the high school will be back in this year, and it'll continue for four years in the program. Any questions on that?
Hurrah.
Go ahead.
One question in the next, in the same paragraph. You were talking about the program being, participation in the program is for four years. Does that mean we have free and reduced lunch for all four years?
So, it'll be free lunch and breakfast, no reduce, so no one pays, no student pays anything for breakfast or lunch for four years. And then, each year, what I do is I go and upload the file to try to extend the years. So, this year, I wanna try to get the number to be even the same as what we are right now or even better, and then I can extend the program another year. If nothing changes or goes down, we just stay within the four years, and I try again the year after that.
So, something had changed. Is that why we lost it at the high school last year, because of a change?
So, what changed was, when I came aboard last year in March, this full school year, I had the opportunity to, month by month, send the list to find how many direct certs are within our district. And by doing that each month, there's a better chance of capturing those students that we didn't capture the year before. So, at the time that I came in, in March, I really only had a week to do that and not nine or eight months before that. So, because April 1st is the cutoff day for the following school year. So, September, October, all through this year, I was able to upload those numbers, capture the students, and then re-upload the students that weren't matching for direct certs, and that's how the number changed.
Well, thank you for your job. Well done.
No problem. Thank you. So, with that, the food service meal pricing. So, although all students will be eligible for free meals, students wishing an additional meal will be, will need to buy the meal. So, we'll also continue to charge staff members who wish to buy meals. So, our reimbursement rates changed based on DESI estimates for school year fifteen, sixteen. The table below shows what we received per meal for reimbursement during the fifteen, sixteen school year, free, reduced, and paid. The total income includes the federal reimbursement plus what we charge in the schools. So, these numbers were actual for last year. And so, at the high school, this is what pretty much students had to pay, free, reduced, or paid. And at the other schools, if you want an additional meal, you would go with the paid price, which was two seventy, and the reduced price was forty. So, the next table shows the proposed change to the local charge for school, for lunch, should a student want an additional meal for this year coming forward. So, there are some restrictions on how much we can charge. The federal government has issued guidance, which says that in order to reduce the possibility of free lunch reimbursement, offsetting paid school lunch fees, DESI recommends we charge no less than two dollars and eighty cents per paid lunch. Otherwise, non-federal funds are to be used to make up the difference. So, my recommendation would be to increase the lunch price from two seventy by ten cents to two eighty, to fall within the guidelines of what the government, DESI, is requiring us to do. So, if someone wants an extra lunch this year, they would pay two eighty for that at all the schools. And so, the other, all schools for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, the federal reimbursement rate shows, shown below, is based on the reimbursement rates for this year, for this past year, as we have not yet received confirmation for the seventeen rates. So, they haven't yet come out with those rates. That's why the numbers look the same in the graph before that. So, once that comes out, then I can update it. So, as you can see, the paid, where it says two, three twenty-three, is actually higher than the free and reduced. So, those rates haven't been established yet by the federal government. When they do, I can update the table for next year. But what they're saying is that you don't want to charge anything less than two eighty for this coming year. So, the average lunch price in the social collaborative school districts that we're part of for the sixteen, fifteen, sixteen years is currently two eighty. However, districts are planning to make increases to prices based upon the recommended minimum price and any additional increases to reflect their menus. Breakfast, we have a little more flexibility in setting breakfast prices than with lunch, as the federal government has not stipulated minimum rates ratios for prices. So, I, one fifty has been the set breakfast rate since 2014. The average high school breakfast price in the social collaborative school districts is about a dollar forty-two, although the majority of the districts are charging a dollar fifty. So, my recommendation would be to keep the breakfast price at the current rate of one fifty per meal for any student wanting to purchase an additional meal for school year sixteen, seventeen. And then, I don't, I do not propose any change to breakfast rates for this year, so I would like to keep that the same. For adult meals, breakfast cost for adult meals will be based on a la carte pricing for items. For example, a bagel and cream cheese for adults would range from a dollar fifty to a dollar seventy-five, depending on the size of the bagel and the amount of cream cheese. At the schools, it's different because we have different sizes. There's a two-grain bagel, there's a one-grain bagel, so the prices would be different. So, the adult lunch charges at the schools would start at three seventy-five, for example, like a salad with a protein. Other prices may vary depending on the meal. So, portion sizes and items will drive the pricing. Those prices will be determined when the menu is established before the start of the school year. My recommendation is to keep the current adult meal price at three seventy-five for the minimum price per meal at all schools for sixteen, seventeen. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Go ahead.
As usual, an excellent report.
This is the short version.
Well, you know, brevity is the soul of wit. But I was surprised that, that the adult meals vary depending on the size of the bagel. I mean, that's really quite a refinement.
So, like in some school districts, they serve fish and chips, which they charge six dollars for, and then they might have a salad with protein would be three seventy-five or four dollars. So, that's the price difference, you know, depending on-
But you actually, you actually, depending on which bagel a teacher, for example, chooses, they would pay more or less?
Well, yeah. I mean, if it's, I think for the, for the adults, it'd probably be the same across the board. We just have two different sizes, so, but if they wanted the small one, I don't, I wouldn't want to charge more than, you know, what would be fair.
Do you weigh, do you weigh salads?
Ah, yes, we portion them out. So, they're all portioned.
You weigh them after they're-
As they're building them, so they know how much to put in, set, like they put two tomatoes, two cucumbers, you know, so many onions.
Okay. And finally, it's, it's great that we've got free meals for all the schools. My question is, how actively are we pursuing feedback from particularly students, but all people who actually eat these meals?
We have the participation rates, and I'll have that available in the report in September.
I realize that actually eating it is an indication of something, but it's not necessarily an indication of satisfaction if that's the only thing available. So, my question remains, how actively are we soliciting feedback?
So, we are, we are actively soliciting feedback through the manager and the teams that are in the schools. We're probably gonna gear the program more towards education and taste, and testing, taste testing, I think at the elementary school levels, so the kids can not just get what they're supposed to get and then only eat certain things and throw some away. Waste is a big problem, so I wanna make sure that we're trying to get enough food so that the students can eat the food and not just serve it because the government says to serve it. So, we're looking at ways to do that. You know, I don't wanna, now that the program has done well this past year, I wanna reinvest a lot of the money into the program to buy more products, to offer more choices, you know, to, to get more feedback from the students as to what they want. So, that's what we're looking to do for this year coming for, coming up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Judy.
Mary.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need to vote?
For what?
To increase the price.
Oh, yeah. This is on the, this is the lunch.
Raise it to two eighty.
Yep. I need a motion to raise the price of lunch to two dollars and eighty cents.
I move to raise the price of the lunch to two dollars and eighty cents.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Five zero zero.
Do we vote on the breakfast?
There was no change.
But the adult did change, correct?
Adult breakfast and lunch stayed the same.
Adult stayed the same?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it was just the one change?
Just the one change.
Yeah, just the one change.
Yeah. And that, it's good to do that, to keep in line with that, just so going forward, if something does happen down the road, you don't have a huge increase. You're falling in line with what they want us to do.
Okay. So, next is the plans for the concession stand at Spilling Field.
So, we're here tonight on behalf of the Wareham Vikings Athletic Booster Club. Just to, to let you know that we have applied for funding from the Community Preservation Committee to rebuild the concession stand at Spilling Field.
So, what do you want to do?
We want to replace these concession stand and the ticket booth. So, up until now, it's been used by the Wareham Athletic Association, but they recently turned it over. They're no longer gonna operate it. So, they've turned it over to the Booster Club. And so, we took that opportunity to go to the Community Preservation Committee to request funds to rebuild both buildings. Combine them, it would be one building. It would look a little bit different, ticket booth and concession stand. So, we've just, we've just submitted the application. It's my understanding that that committee has not had a meeting since we've submitted the application, so I really don't have any other information. We'll go through that process and hopefully be on the, you know, be on the agenda at town meeting in the fall.
So, I, I'm assuming that you are looking for our support?
Yes.
Well, you have mine.
Okay.
Because it would be very good to get rid of that eyesore of a building and have something that's meaningful and something that can be maintained properly and something that people are gonna go to and buy things, and something that your association will be able to say, "This is ours and we're proud of it." You absolutely have my support in this. And I hope that CPC understands how important this is. I mean, we've got a perfectly terrific snack bar for the baseball team.
Right.
And there's no reason why, if we wanna draw fans to football, that we don't have the same thing. But I think it's an excellent idea, absolutely terrific idea.
Well, thank you. So, that's why we're here, I mean, for your support. In the future, we may ask you for something in writing to submit with, to go along with our application that we've already submitted.
Let me know.
Okay. Okay. Like I said, we haven't really had that much contact with them yet, but I expect that we will.
When you say, when you say "them," who are you talking about?
The Community Preservation Committee. They have a pretty standard application that we filled out and submitted, and now I'm just waiting for them to come back with their questions and, that's where we're at.
Comments, questions? Go ahead.
Thank you for being here. In your communications, you made it clear that the shed was not part of this.
Correct.
Because, because the WAA wants to retain the shed.
They do.
Okay.
It's just the ticket booth and the concession stand.
Okay. Is, do you have any problem with that request on the part of the WAA?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
Secondly, do you know, can I assume that this portion, this is coming out of the recreation part of the CPC?
Yes.
Dollars?
That's what we requested.
Okay.
Yes.
And this is considered a renovation, not a new building, or is this gonna be considered a new building?
The construction part of it is not my expertise, but it'll be, it will be a new building because it's, it's going to move. So, where the ticket booth is now?
I think that's probably important because I think getting renovations is much more difficult than getting something new.
Okay.
So, if you haven't already gone in that direction, I would make it very clear to the CPC that you're talking about a new building.
Okay. Now, we've talked about plans, like I said, to combine the concession stand and the ticket booth. One will face one way, one will face the other way, you know, one building, and it will look nice.
Okay. You also have my support, and I assume that you would like to be able to take a vote of the school committee to your meeting with the CPC. Is that a fair statement?
Um, yes, that is a fair statement.
So, with the chair's approval?
We can do that.
I think it'd be great to give them a vote of approval that they can actually take with them.
Mm-hmm.
Question?
Yeah.
So, I gotta admit, I'm a little foggy on this. So, just straighten my brain out.
Okay.
And that's gonna be very difficult. So, we're not in any kind of bidding war with the WAA over this.
No.
They don't want to do it anymore?
No, they've put it in writing.
Because they have first dibs on it, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And they've put it in writing, and I can get you a copy of this letter that-
I have the letter.
Oh, you do?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay, so, yeah.
So, all they want is the shed.
Yes.
They don't want any, they're not asking for any claim to the concession stand.
No. No.
Because they've done wonderful work.
They have.
And, okay, that's good, because I didn't want it to be a bidding war between boosters and WAA.
No, no, we would never, we would never have done that.
All right, thank you.
No.
Okay. Mary? Do you wanna make some form of motion?
Sure. I, I move that we support the efforts of the Wareham Boosters to build a new concession stand and-
Ticket booth.
Ticket booth, thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Okay, well, thank you. And we'll keep you updated as we move forward with the process.
When you get ready for this, if they want a letter from us, along with this record of the vote, we'll be happy to give it to you.
Okay, great. I will be in touch with you about that.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Do you, do you see the need to go before the Board of Selectmen? Because I noted in, I noted in your letter that the Board of Selectmen defer to the school committee with respect to grounds that are part of the school area. So, do you expect to have to go? Because they may want you to go just because it's CPC. I think that's the protocol, so be prepared.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not familiar with the whole process, but we will find out.
Well, once again, if you need our help with that, we can do that, too.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
This agenda item is to, this is the first time I've been before you, just to provide a notification on the rate of pay for substitutes and request increase to some of those substitutes rates. I mean, I think, as was pointed out earlier, some of our, the rates we pay are well below- I mean, I think, as was pointed out earlier, some of our, the rates we pay are well below the market rate and below what other districts are paying, not all districts, but a lot of districts in the surrounding area and beyond. Hey, this is an issue that's been many years in the making, and without more available funds, it's going to be a few years to be able to fully correct it. So, for this year, for this meeting, we wanted to request an increase in just three areas, which was custodians, secretaries, and food service, and for now, all other rates to remain the same. We would like to increase the rate for sub-custodians to $10.47 an hour, for secretaries, substitute secretaries to $11.00 an hour, and for food service worker substitutes to $10.00 an hour, and that would also be the rate for food service monitors. Any questions?
Yeah, Michael, do you have an idea of what it's going to cost us, you know, based on, on past years?
Yep. Yep. So, the cost of this will be?
What this kind of roughs numbers are going to be?
Yep. So, the cost for these groups will be between $7,000 and $10,000 for the year.
In total?
Yes.
For all three groups?
For all three groups.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
So, what was the first rate you quoted?
Custodians.
And what, what was that?
$10.47.
So, it's custodians, food service?
And secretaries.
And secretaries. Okay. And these, these are hourly positions with?
Yep.
With no benefits?
Exactly.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes. Unless they go over a certain number of hours over a three-month period under Affordable Care Act. But by and large, that.
Basically, it's an hourly rate and that's it?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. And is there a reason you're limiting the request to these three groups at this time?
Money, affordability, yeah, what we can afford, so.
And the total impact on the budget is about $10,000?
Yeah.
I have a question. Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Um, when I heard Mr. Fitzgerald speak, he spoke about special education teachers being brought to cover classes, and I, I don't know if anyone's here to answer this question, but I really want it answered at some point if it can't be answered this evening. Because usually, when a special education teacher is teaching with a regular education teacher, it is usually on the student's IP to have in-class support.
Yep.
If that special education teacher is taken out to cover for a teacher, then the, we're out of compliance.
Yeah. So, I'm not worried of that happening, but, I mean, I can look into it for you.
I'd like to know that answer. Thank you.
Michael, this request is specifically for custodian, secretaries, and food service.
At this point, yeah.
And we're going to address the rest of it at a later date?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, go ahead. Well, we can kick the ball down the road all we want. We addressed it at a later date.
Yeah.
But bottom line is, we're woefully underpaying our substitute teachers. Woefully. And not, and just to put our heads in the sand and say, "Well, we're not going to deal with it," doesn't solve the problem.
I agree with Dr. Sylvia. That's the first thing that I saw when I was, when I was looking at this. I was going to ask the question, can we get substitutes at this rate of pay, a substitute teacher? And then, I heard earlier in the evening that, no, we haven't been able to, and I didn't think so. And that's a serious problem.
Yep. I'd be glad to discuss this, but I'm not sure it's appropriate, meaning, is, is the increase in pay of teachers on the agenda?
No, well, this is the agenda, custodian, secretary, and food service. I just give you my two cents.
No, I understand that. So, I assume the chair is not looking for any discussion on this matter?
No.
Okay.
The reason I was asking was because it had the rate of pay for the substitute teachers there.
Well, okay. So, I guess the, the problem is that the first part of this graph showing substitute teachers probably should have been left off at this point.
Well, in the interest of completeness, and, you know, we haven't really.
Full disclosure, right, Michael?
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I mean, it's an issue where.
But for the purposes of this meeting, we are talking specifically about custodian, secretaries, and food service.
Yeah.
And you're looking for a vote on that.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the administration, an increase to custodians' substitutes to $10.47 an hour, secretaries to $11.00 an hour, and food service to $10.00 an hour.
I second it.
Yep.
But as a, as a matter of protocol, if, if in fact the recommendation from Mr. McMillan and I assume our superintendent is zero, that essentially, for the teachers and paraprofessionals, that's essentially putting it on the agenda? Or is there going to be a future recommendation?
Yeah, go ahead.
We agree that our subs are underpaid, and there are certain times of the year that we have a very difficult time finding substitutes to cover classes, therefore, we, it's all hands on deck. We are looking at what it would cost to increase teacher pay, paraprofessional pay, intermittent subpay, because we do know that we need to get competitive. At this point in our budget, though, this is something that we need to have a discussion with, with the Budget Subcommittee, as well as do some calculations. We have some rough ideas about what it would cost us, and quite simply, it's not in this year's budget. However, we do understand there is a dire need, and that we will need to address this at some future date. Not in the, not in the distant future either. It's in the close.
Meaning this summer?
Uh, this summer, at the beginning of the school year.
Mr. Chair?
There's a motion and a second for these three items. We should limit our discussion to these three items?
Further discussion on these three items? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? 5-0-0. Okay. You, want to stay there and talk about the obsolete equipment?
Yep. Yep. It's a short, well, it's a short list, but, you know, sixty-odd devices that are no longer, that are either obsolete or inoperable, and we would like to be able to dispose of them. Under school committee policy and town charter, we have to get, we would like to get school committee approval. I want to see if your approval gets selectmen approval, and then we'll be able to dispose of these items. Our intention would be to provide, make, present a list of items on the website, and if nobody bids on them, we will just dispose of them.
Move approval of the documented items to be moved to obsolete equipment?
Second.
Our motion is second on the obsolete equipment. Any further discussion? A being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0. Thank you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Yes, thank you. I would like to share with everyone, the Wareham Best Buddies Program is attempting to bring Special Olympics Unified Sports Program to Wareham High School. Therefore, there will be a fundraiser this Saturday evening at Slur knows with comedian Kristen Hurley and friends. It begins at 7:30. The tickets are at, available at Slur knows. They are $25.00. It's a 21-and-over event. If you would like information or tickets, please call Nicole at (508) 273-6104. The summer school began on Tuesday. We have high school summer school, middle school, and elementary all going in different buildings. We also have the care program and the extended day program with approximately 233 students at the middle school. It's quite an event. Our students are fed breakfast and lunch while they're here, and it seems to be quite a bit of fun, and I know that it goes throughout the summer. We will be having a full agenda at our next meeting in August, and at this point, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any reports from any members of the school committee? Judy, did you bring the slideshow of your vacation?
No.
Any reports from any, any members of the committee? Any business not anticipated in the last 48 hours?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Not that it's business in the last 48 hours, but I just think that we've got the union president here, and I just think that in terms of this substitute issue, that a joint effort between Wareham Education Association and the administration could go a long way in trying to solve the substitute problem. So, I strongly encourage that we enter into some collaborative discussions on both the administration and the union solving this issue.
I think that's a good idea.
It benefits and it affects both parties.
Oh, that's an excellent idea. Anything further? Yes, sir?
On that score, and I don't disagree with my colleague, but I, as the superintendent and the business manager know, if you look at our use of substitutes compared to other districts, it's off the charts, which lends all three of us, meaning the superintendent, the business manager, and myself, to conclude that we may be classifying things in the wrong way and distorting the analysis. So, I would like us to resolve that issue at the same time, because we, unfortunately, people go to DESI to do comparisons, and our comparisons on this particular item are, are nuts. I mean, we're 50% more than the DESI average for the state, we're significantly more than that with respect to contiguous districts. It's just, we're, some, something is being misclassified in the, in, in the way we're categorizing our use of substitutes, and I think that needs to be addressed at the same time.
I couldn't agree more. I just think that this, if we approach this thing from a collaborative perspective, all of these items can be brought to light, because I also agree that our substitute budget, for whatever reason, is kind of off-center.
Out of whack.
To say the least. So, I think that if we enter into discussions in a negotiation year, enter into honest collaborative discussions with the union, I think we can come up with some, some healthy alternatives. That's all I'm saying. Let's, you know, throw it out there, and let's have some honest discussion about it.
Anything else?
All set. Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.